Just feeling yourself more in tune with your body. You may even feel tingles already. And just remember, during this exercise, sometimes we will get cramps around the body, or tingling, or almost pins and needles sensations. But don't worry, remember, this is the healing process. It's like we're sending oxygen from the bloodstream back into the cells of the body. So when you start to feel these tingles, these pins and needles, just try to allow yourself to surrender to this feeling of joy as you heal yourself and witness this healing process. So as most of you know, we're going to go through four breathing exercises, which are all guided with music in a moment. And between each round, we're going to hold the lungs empty. When instructed, you'll empty your lungs, and then we're just going to hold. When you feel you have no air in the lungs, we close the mouth, and you can also draw the chin to the chest lightly to create this airlock. Fight and flight response is going to kick in and probably tell you to take a breath, but when you do hear this voice, guys, just really try to surrender, sink into this healing response. We're going to push past the fight and flight response. We trust, let go, and really, really just try to breathe deeply and fully, even if it feels ridiculous, because honestly, the louder we breathe, the deeper we breathe, the more effects we're going to feel around the body. And we want to use the full diaphragm, because this is like a pump. And the more we use this pump to circulate the energy all around the body, the more we start to feel life. And this is anti-aging, it's regenerating on so many levels, good for your brain, and it's going to relieve stress and reduce inflammation in the body as well. So just remember, surrender, let go to any expectations you may have, and just breathe in rhythm with the music. It's all about letting go to the beat of your heart, to the rhythm of your breath, and tuning in with the music on a subconscious level. We want to try to eliminate this feeling of thinking. We want to just surrender and witness anything that comes up. So whenever you're ready, guys, just lay yourself down on the mat and make sure you're nice and comfortably supported. It's likely, as I said, that we can get lightheaded and tingly during this exercise, so just make sure you're nice and comfortable. If you've got your headphones, place them in, because it's really going to help with the binaural beats and all of the music that's been created. And just staying with this visualization of the moon, drawing this white light into the body. Feeling it come into every cell, this feeling of deep joy. And you can even let out a smile of joy to yourself, because smiling activates a different response in the brain as well. And what we want to do is bring these feelings of joy, of life, of contentment into the body. And any visions we have, we're bringing positive feelings into them, eliminating anything we think that may stand in the way of that, because you are powerful. And this is what we're going to do in this meditation today, we're bringing your power back into yourself. So keep drawing that energy down from the moon today, and together, we create a vortex. So staying in the heart, staying in the solar plexus. And when you hear the guidance, just start to breathe with the music. We're going to be creating coherence in the body. And also creating energy to charge up any thoughts or feelings. Getting ready to completely surrender to your breath. Drawing life force, energy, prana into every cell in the body as you breathe in, and then exhaling, letting go of any tension and sinking down more and more. Fully into the belly and completely empty the lungs. When you feel the lungs are empty, just hold, surrender, and let go. Tuning in to the vibrations, the feelings around the body. Feeling yourself heal, every cell in the body. And if you haven't already, just take a deep in-breath now and hold it for 10 to 15 seconds. Just return to your normal breath as we get ready to come into our second round. That's it, keep going, feeling this surge of energy come into the body with every in-breath. And then just surrender, let go, each exhale. Into the belly and exhale through the mouth. That's it, we're nearly there, keep going. Start to breathe a little bit deeper, feeling these sensations draw more and more into the body, these tingles, pins and needles around the body. Just trust the process. Taking a deep, full in-breath, and on the exhalation, just completely empty the lungs. Just have complete trust as you sink down a little bit deeper. Sinking past your mind's limits. Just trust, surrender. Completely let go to your visions, your feelings. You are amazing. Feel every cell in your body ignite. Seeing yourself glow with this bright, purifying light. And if you haven't already, take a deep in-breath now and hold it for 10 to 15 seconds. And just completely surrender. Let go to this feeling of complete, full-body bliss. As we start to heal on a cellular level. Whenever you feel that first urge to breathe, just sink past. Relax a little bit deeper and trust the process. Feel yourself on a vibrational level. Tuning in to the frequencies, the feelings, the sensations. And if you haven't already, take a deep in-breath now and hold it for 10 to 15 seconds. And whenever you're ready, just return to your normal flow of breath until you hear the guidance for our final round. Let go to the beat of the drum, let go to the beat of your heart. Start to breathe in a more animalistic rhythm. Tuning in deeper. Drawing this energy in with every in-breath. Following this rhythm into the belly and into the heart. Fully into the belly and completely empty the lungs. And as we go into our final rough-hold phase, just allow yourself to go a little bit deeper into the subconscious mind, into the healing process of every cell in your body. Surrender, let go. And as you lay here in this moment of complete bliss, just witness any thoughts, any feeling. Don't think, just feel, as you sink into the deepest parts of your subconscious. And if you haven't already, take a deep in-breath now and hold it for 10 to 15 seconds. And whenever you're ready, just allow yourself to return to your normal rhythm of breath. Coming into the final relaxation. Keeping the eyes closed, the attention drawn in to the body. Just allow yourself to witness any thoughts or any visions that pop up, and without attaching, just allow them to pass. Just stay focused on the flow of your natural breath for the next two minutes as you allow your awareness to slowly come back into your body. As you lay here with your attention drawn in to the body, just start to witness any thoughts, any sensations, become the observer. any sensations, become the observer. And just slowly start to bring your awareness back in to your physical body. Taking a deep in-breath through the nose, interlocking the hands and stretching tall above the head for a nice full-body stretch. And as you release the hands, just hug your knees into your chest as you gently rock from side to side. And give yourself a moment of gratitude, of self-love. And whenever you're ready, just press yourself back up into a comfortable seated position. As we finish today's session with free conscious breath reminders.
Over our free conscious breath reminders, guys, we just want to have a nice straight back as before. And we're going to take three breaths in together on the count of three, fully and deeply. Breathing in through the nose and out through the mouth, keeping one hand on the heart, one hand on the belly. One, two, three, fully in through the nose. And exhaling. Full diaphragm breathing, fully in through the nose. And exhale. And one last deep in-breath, fully in. And just close your eyes, hold the in-breath here for a moment. Feeling that energy, that prana circulate in your body. And just knowing that you have the power to charge yourself up with love and light at any point. And with the exhalation, just allow your whole body to completely relax. As you bring the palms to heart centre, bowing the head. And then just going to rub the hands together, create some friction between the palms. And then pressing the palms together quite hard, bringing the elbows up. We want to put some pressure in the hands here and bring the thumbs back to touch centre of the chest. And just going to close your eyes and roll the eyes in and up as if we were looking up into the brow line. Going to take a deep in-breath in through the nose. Unlock the muscle at the base of the spine. Imagine a surge of energy rush up into the centre of the brain. And again, just visualize the moon here as you connect. And as you exhale, just allow the hands to drop down. And finishing today's meditation and soma session, everybody. So just remember these breathing exercises, you want to use the nose to breathe as much as we can on a day-to-day basis. It keeps the body youthful, it keeps us nice and young, it keeps us healthy, it keeps us hydrated. So yeah, try to eradicate breathing in through the mouth. I've actually got mouth straps that I even sleep with at night time because I'm that pedantic about it now. Learning about mouth breathing is pretty crazy. So breathing in through the nose as much as we can, guys. And remember, we want to use the full diaphragm. I always use the example, we want to breathe like Buddha, let the belly hang. We don't want to be like army soldiers puffed up at the chest, always ready to fight. Because remember, the way in which we breathe actually activates different parts of the brain, neurochemistry and all things like this. So we want to breathe deeply and fully to keep ourselves in a mode of calm, of rest and digest. So the body's healing instead of always protecting ourselves because our immune system's compromised because we're always in this state of fight and flight. So yeah, I hope everyone had a good session. Do let me know how you felt, what visions you got. I know this one's a little bit emotional. I mean, I've done it a couple of times and the music tracks get quite emotional. And if any of you do start to feel emotions come up in these sessions, just know that we are removing stagnant and old energy, okay? It's all about letting go of old crap. We might not even be conscious of it anymore. It's literally like a lifetime worth of crap that everybody may have deep down. So if you feel any emotions, even laughter, crying, let it all go, it's all normal. It's all about coming into the flow and allowing ourselves to connect with ourselves. Surrender to any thoughts, any feelings. And also surrendering to the breathing because at first it's super weird to breathe in this way. It's quite animalistic, but the more you sort of let go to this animalistic rhythm, the more we tune in of ourselves and the more we tune in of nature as well. And when we start to do this, we just become more happy on a subconscious level. We boost our serotonin levels, our dopamine levels. It really works on a deep, profound level. How many levels do I want to say here? But honestly, the benefits, they just keep going, 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 going. So if anyone ever has specific questions, guys, I've literally got libraries in the back of my head here and it's super hard to cover everything, but fire away. I'm just going to read some of these comments, excuse my serious face. You're welcome Sheila, I'm glad you enjoyed it. And you Maria, and Pauline, James, thank you, nice to have you on my session again. Yeah, so it's normal if you feel these feelings of nervous and anxiety come up because it has been a quite a stressful year for a lot of people and even loved ones and things like this are going through quite a lot of stress. So if you do feel that come up, let it go. It's all about just letting this stuff go because if we start to think about it and worry about what it might be, we're sort of holding on to it and not letting that go. So like I say, yeah, that's fine if you feel these feelings come up. Sometimes I burst out into tears in these sessions, you know? But afterwards I feel absolutely liberated and during tears, sometimes I don't even know why I'm crying. It doesn't even have a meaning sometimes, but just know that tears, they actually release cortisol as well. So this is good. And if you have feelings of nervous, you may feel shaky and we're letting that all out. In some soma sessions, we do something called shaking, which I don't do too much in my sessions because some people find it a little bit strange. But a good way to let go of tension in the body is if you want to get funky with it, just put some music on and shake your hands, like shake your whole body around the room, just shake everything out. Because the way my mentors explain it is like when a dog or something feels fear, they'll shake, their fur will stand up and they'll shake it all out. Animals deal with stress there and then they let it out. But unfortunately, humans, we keep it all stored inside because we need to be strong in front of everyone else. But you know, we're all experiencing the same thing deep down. And when you feel these emotions come up, just let it go. I've even been in classrooms before where people are screaming into pillows and stuff. I used to work at a yoga school in Thailand, so you see all sorts of things going down. It's just not really that common over here. So I'm glad you had a little bit of a release there. Just don't panic if you do start to feel these things because it's all normal. Any sensations that come up is normal. Thank you Hannah, it was lovely to have you on my session, me dears, glad you enjoyed. Like a green ocean, that's nice here. But yeah, because we were focusing a lot on the heart chakra tonight as well. So we're drawing energy into this part, James. So maybe that's why we were connecting with the green wave, drawing energy in from the moon as well. So that's a beautiful little meditation you had there. Yeah, nice. So if you guys were connecting with this feeling of drawing into the moon, which we set our intentions for in the beginning anyway, we would have sort of connected with this. And as we know, energy, sorry, energy, light, it moves in waves. So we're connecting with this wave light and we're drawing it into the body. And we're charging it up on the cellular level. This is why we feel really vibrational as well because we're actually drawing energy into the body. And for those of you that don't know this, we actually have five bodies. The physical one is actually the smallest one and we have five. So I'm not going to go into that, but when we're doing these breathing exercises, we're actually activating them all at the same time and unifying them. So this is why we can really start to feel outer body experiences when we go deep into these sessions and just, as I say, let go. It's all about surrender and let go because it took me about three years to surrender and let go. And that's the training process of all of this. But anyway, on that note, guys, I'm going to leave you all to it. I hope you have a lovely evening and yes, I will hopefully see you soon. If you're not sure about this, I'm doing a free meditation on Wednesday as well. So feel free to jump on that one. It's just going to be another support for people during this time. So I hope to see you guys there. If not, I'm sure I see you at some point soon. So sending love to all of you and drop me a message if you want to know anything else as well, guys. Bye, James, thank you, bye.